Okay, welcome everyone to the zoning boards July 10th, 2025 meeting. If we would stand and say the pledge of allegiance, the honor of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if everybody would make sure your phones are off, we'd appreciate it. Heather?
So first on the agenda, we have correspondence Habitat for Humanity 508 St. John's Place in Riverhead. This was for appeal number 2023-049. They are requesting to reopen it and have it reheard on July 24th, 2025 for a slight deviation in as-built conditions.
Can you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Weskey.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Godzilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that's for granted.
And for public hearings, first up, we have appeal number 2025-020, Jeffrey and Bay Salem, 47 Highview Drive, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Act number 600-49-3-17, B80 zoning to legalize a shed in the front yard. Applicant requests variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-29A1A where existing shed is located in front yard, not permitted. This was adjourned from June 12th of 2025.
Is anyone here for that? Anyone here for this variance?
All right, second call. Second call.
Okay. Forty-seven Highview Drive, Wading River. Guess that's that.
All right, second call.
All right, so we'll move on. So we'll take appeal number 2025-018, George Foundus, 24 Michaels Lane, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Act number 600-96-1-9.2, Residence B80 zoning for proposed 29 by 31-foot detached garage and to legalize a shed. Applicant requests variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-29A1B where proposed garage side yard setback is 14.2 feet and the minimum required is 25 feet. And Chapter 301-29A1C where existing shed 7.3 feet by 9.8 feet in rear yard is 19.8 feet from the property line and the minimum required is 20 feet.
Yes. You know the drill. So I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Sure, Tracy Rivera Rena. Tracy's permits, 363 Terryville Road, Terryville, New York, 11776.
Tell us what you're looking for, please.
So first thing we'll do is we'll address the shed that is at 19.8 vers 20. We're already here before the board for the garage and the shed just happened to be part of the application, so we added it on. The major part of the application today is the proposed 29 by 31-foot detached car garage that's holding a 14.2 side yard vers 20. After speaking with the owners of the property, the reason that they want the garage in the location it's at verse further back in the yard is because they have a growing family with young children and they want to be able to have access to the garage to be able to access the side of the house when they're parking the garage, when they're coming in with the children. They'll be using it for storage. They will not be finishing off the garage. I have drove around the area. There are many oddly shaped parcels in the area of different sized parcels with garages and whatnot, some that have like two front yards, some that have a front yard and a side yard. It was very hard to see the setbacks on what is with the other parcels in the area. If you want, I can submit the aerials and the pictures that I do have, but it was a little difficult to get pictures from the street. We don't feel that this is really that impactful. The properties are heavily vegetated. The neighbor that would be most directly affected by this was spoken to and the owner had given me feedback that they didn't have any issues with it. Once again, it's just really kind of a storage and they wanted to keep it kind of a little closer to the house just so they can access the garage and go into the house instead of further back. With the code, I did speak with Andreas and it needs to be 10 feet away from the house. So, you know, if we didn't have that code where you had to keep the garage 10 feet away from the house, maybe we wouldn't have had to have a 14-foot side yard setback. And it never plans on being attached to the house or part of the main dwellings. You don't have to worry about them all of a sudden encroaching and making the house larger than it is with a side back on the main dwelling. So, once again, I have a bunch of aerials here that I took off Suffolk GIS and whatever pictures I could get from the street just to show you the character of the neighborhood in case anyone is not really, you know, familiar with the area. I'll address any questions.
We've all been there.
Oh, okay.
So I just want to make a correction for the record.
Sure.
You stated that the proposed side yard is 14.2 where minimum required is 20. The minimum required is actually 25.
Oh, okay, so the shed was 20.
Correct.
Sorry, the minimum is 25.
Because the shed is in the rear yard, so then the setbacks in the property lines are 20 feet when it's in a side yard.
25, correct. Yeah, sorry about that. So yeah, so we're supposed to be at 25 and we're proposing 14.
Do you have any plans? Do you have a set of plans I could look at?
No, I didn't. So I really, I really try to make it where the homeowners don't have to spend money until they're approved on something, so I didn't have them do plans on it because they're not actually approved for it.
So is it gonna have an exterior set of stairs?
No, no exterior stairs, only two front garage doors and no windows or any, anything on the.
So no windows in the garage anywhere?
No, not, well, if there are.
Because it's an awfully big garage. Not that I have a problem with a big garage. I just find it strange that, you know, it doesn't have any light in there, natural light during the day. And is there gonna be a second story elevated for storage?
For storage, but there's been no talk about there, you know, being any kind of second floor. If anything, it would be rafters and if there was a second floor, it wouldn't be at the height where you can finish it off for habitable space.
Okay, all right. Well, it's kind of hard for me to approve something. I don't know what it's gonna look like because I can tell from my past experiences what it's gonna be, how it's designed.
Would you like us to come back and have an elevation drawing so you can see what the.
Oh, an elevation drawing's okay.
Okay.
But.
I just don't, I don't tell the clients to go and have construction documents and spend money on things that aren't approved because if the board says no, then they've wasted money. And I've, you know, certain towns require it as part of the application.
Right.
So, and if it's not required, then I don't normally have them spend the money on it just in case it's.
So you wouldn't want to attach the garage to the main structure?
No, they're not looking to attach the garage.
They don't want to?
No.
Because there's a heat pump in the way and a few other items that might interfere with them.
Yes. And like I said, they have small, they're a small, you know, they're a young family. They have small children. They're growing. Actually, they're expecting another child any day. So the husband's like, really, like, I really need my garage.
So is it gonna be like a man's cave?
No, as far, as far as I've been told, it's strictly just, it's just gonna be a girl. I mean, I can't say that he's gonna be sitting out there with his cars once all the kids start coming around.
Well, these structures are, you know, they are large and they do become very useful.
Yes.
But they do turn into other things.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no.
You never get rid of your kids this way.
Yeah, so there's.
If you put them in that structure.
There's no speaker, there was never any talk of him converting anything over. If there was, it would have been the garage that's attached to the house.
Okay.
As part of the house, maybe.
I would like something, maybe basically in writing that the ceiling heights, the ceiling joist heights on the second floor.
Okay.
That there'll be no exterior stairs.
Absolutely.
No storage or living habitable space on the second floor, if any.
Perfect, okay, yeah.
And they should consider some windows.
Yes.
Or a window.
If they are, it's not gonna be on the side of the parcel that affects the neighbor. If they did to put windows in.
Okay.
Wouldn't be the one that would affect.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
I think you just mentioned it. So there is an existing garage in the house?
With the house, yes, there is an attached garage, yes.
Okay, and then, so this is for?
Well, they're gonna be using this as a garage. They have extra vehicles and they need more space.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's talk of them in the future turning over, you know, the existing attached garage to living space in the future. There is, you know, talk of it.
Okay.
But for the record now, it's not living space?
As far as I know, it's not.
But they do have it in their mind to make it living space someday.
The garage, yeah, absolutely. Their family's expanding.
So, you know, a good architect will help you design it for future uses as well. And I'm not sure Wading River allows accessory apartments in that zone.
They are allowed. RB80?
Yeah.
It's allowed.
So if you build the garage and you decide to put accessory structure in there, living habitable space, you need to have a CO for three years on the garage. Just keep that in mind.
I gotta tell you, I've been doing expedite for like permitting now for like, I don't know, 30 years. And I tell people all the time, if you're gonna buy, buy in Riverhead because I know that if you have a detached structure and you're in the right zone and you have a CO for a certain period of time, you can like put your in-laws there. You could put your family there. Let me tell you something, you can't do that in other townships.
No, I know.
No, like, I mean, yeah.
So how long would it take you to prepare a plan and/or written write-up requested by zoning board member, Mr. Barnes?
If it doesn't have to be stamped by an architect or an engineer, we could probably have something in 48 hours. If you want it to be stamped, then, then it might take a little longer because I have to see if they've actually contracted out with an architect and.
Well, what's their urgency?
Um, they, he's ready to pop with another baby.
That's a good time to be on the.
I know, I know. I mean, you know, it was like, I get a text message here, a text message there, and then soon as the wife became pregnant, it was like every week I was getting another message.
I'm quite sure when you're along this, this far, coming to the zoning board.
Sure.
You probably have an architect already.
I would have to ask him. I'm sure, you know, I know he has his contractor.
Money at the time and I get that.
Okay.
So maybe you can draw up, you know, conceptual plan.
Okay, perfect.
And then we'll.
Okay.
Look, bless you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's fine. I'm sure they're not gonna have any issues with that, drawing up the plan, saying that there's not gonna be any habitable space above. And what was the other thing that you wanted on there?
So he wanted a statement regarding no exterior stair, that the structure, the second story or the rafters would be limited to storage and not habitable space.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, ceiling joists.
Sure.
So.
And maybe.
We can adjourn.
Sure.
And if you'd like, you can contact Heather.
Sure.
And you can determine when you can have that available and we'll reschedule you for the next available.
Do I have to repost or remount?
No.
Okay, perfect. So I'll email you. I'll probably send you an email once I leave here and then I'll get in touch with the owners to move forward.
So you want, you want to adjourn and leave it open?
Let's get it out of here. If he's all right with that. Why don't we approve?
Subject two? Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna be heard?
It's fine with me too.
Is there anyone else that they want to speak on the variance?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, respectfully regard to appeal number 2025-018. I move that the appeal of George Foundus, 24 Michaels Lane, Wading River, STM number 600-96-1-9.2, Residence B80, RB-80 zoning, variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-29A, Subdivision 1B, where proposed garage side yard setback is 14.2 feet, minimum required is 25 feet, and 301-29A1C where existing shed 7.3 feet, uh, 7.3 feet by 9.8 feet in rear yard is 19.8 feet from property line, minimum required be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments to, if any, as filed with the building inspector, subject to the conditions of receipt of.
Subject to receipt of stamped plans depicting the quote, "interior space and improvements" and subject to a written statement stating no exterior staircase, not to be used for habitable space, and limited to storage, to be approved by council. That statement to be approved by council to the ZBI.
Okay.
All right, sounds fabulous.
Good night.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Weskey.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Godzilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye, so good luck.
Perfect. On another note, does anybody have a restaurant they suggest in the area? Gonna go out to eat?
Farm Country Kitchen, I love it.
Farm Country Kitchen, okay.
The Modern Snack Bar?
Thank you so much.
That's a conflict.
Thank you.
You go there once, we'll have you for life, but that's all right.
Yeah, can't get rid of me.
Who says you can't have fun? All right, Heather, please.
Sorry, I'm all business. Appeal number 2025-022, William Boyd, 210 Sound Road, Wading River, Suffolk County Tax Act number 600-30-3-27.4, Residence B80 zoning for a proposed two-story detached garage. Applicant requests variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-29A1C where proposed accessory side yard abutting side street setback is 29.5 feet, minimum required is 60 feet.
Okay.
You can approach the podium.
Do you want me to put this up on the?
I don't know if they need it or want it. They printed out the drawing in case you didn't have it handy, but I'm sure.
We have.
I think that's.
We have it, but you're, you're welcome to put it up here.
Whatever you want.
Put it on the table in the middle.
Just wait for Justin. He'll show you where to place it.
We could put it on the TV.
Perfect. Thank you, you're right. I think.
Well done.
Okay, let's go.
Hi, I'm Bill Boyd. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Please raise your right hand. I swear to tell truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
William Boyd, 210 Sound Road, Wading River. Here with my wife Tracy today. We're looking for variance. We want to put a two-car garage with a rec room on top. I believe you have the drawings also. They were filed with the building department. If not, I believe I have a set with me. If you'd like to see them.
Well, you're gonna have a rec room upstairs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And if you've been to my house, you've seen the plethora of junk.
Yeah.
As far as the, I wanna, wanna put a wood shop and a place for my dad.
Are you gonna fill in the ravine there or what? How are you gonna build that?
I was gonna fill the ravine in, in the front, whether, however it's going.
That's a big one.
Well, Emmett's Lane really does run some water down that street. You're gonna have some problems, so.
Well, actually, you never, we've never gotten water in there in the.
Really?
13 years or 14 years we're there.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna note for you, you would require a, potentially a importation permit under the Town Code.
Okay.
To bring in material. I'd also like to ask you a question. I reviewed the plans with the members of the board, and it looks like for the recreation space, a large room.
Yes.
No dividers, nothing.
Not at this point in time, yet.
Right. Yet you're proposing and expending money on a sanitary system.
Well, it shows a bathroom on the drawing that I submitted to the building department. I'm fairly sure it did.
Yeah, according to the plans that were provided to the ZBA, I don't believe there was any bathroom.
There is, because I actually went through with the building inspector. I'm not sure because he.
Heather, am I wrong?
I'm not.
They're not on the plans that are in our file. I don't know if there are additional plans in the building department file.
Because I actually applied for a.
Not on these drawings.
Permit from the, I have approval from the Suffolk County Waste Management for the septic system.
So you're ready to have a full report?
Yes.
Leroy, Leroy, this is.
It's on the next page, actually. I included that.
If I can step forward. That was.
Yes, I thought, I thought I saw that.
Yes, I included that when I gave it to.
The sanitary system is shown on the survey. It's just the floor plans.
Improvements are not in the plan.
The ones I submitted to the building department had been, so because we had that discussion, I apologize if it didn't make its way to you.
So, okay. So you're gonna bring Phil in?
Yep.
You're gonna build the septic system?
Yes, I already had the test holes done.
And the health department gave you a permit?
Yes, I can send a copy of it if you wish.
I would like to see it.
Sure.
Have it sent, please.
Certainly. Is the scanned copy okay?
Yeah, you can email it to me and I'll disperse it to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ralph. I can't see.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this variance?
That's it? Nobody has anything to say? How is that gonna interplay with your, your residence as far as sanitary?
It shouldn't. I had this Suffolk County.
You're gonna have two sets of sanitary.
Correct.
Interesting.
I actually had that discussion with Harold Tranchin who did it originally.
Good, thank you.
So I had a test hole done. I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I just said quite interesting.
Who's, who's got the ring on this? Heather?
I do. Ready to go?
We should have a comment in there about the, getting the approval from the health department, shouldn't we?
Right. So does the zoning board want an opportunity to review that or is submission, receipt, circulation, and review sufficient?
Yes, and if we're gonna amend that resolution, just add that they need to get a import-export permit from the building department as well. So you need to amend your.
Application.
Yes. It used to be called Chapter 63. It's something different.
Yeah.
229.
Would you mind explaining it to a civilian? I understand.
What's that?
The permit, the additional permit that I need, so.
There's, there's, people were moving soils around and they were, you know, ruining our roads. So the town decided to create an import-export law.
Okay.
So it addresses it. Do you drive along 25 in Calverton?
Yes.
How are those roads?
Uh.
Horrible. They're bad. And they're bad because there was materials taken out of there over the last 25 years and they've destroyed that road. So the town decided to charge $2 a yard for import or exportation.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
There, there are exemptions in the code for certain activities and if you're under a certain amount of fill. So once you determine how much fill you need, you can probably go over it with the chief building inspector and they can determine if you would be eligible for a certificate of exemption. Okay?
I mean, if it's not a big, happy to get the permit, happy to figure out how much fill it needs. I'm happy to do whatever you guys want.
Maybe as applicable would be.
And it's your, it's in your best interest because the town will sit with you, review your project plan. If you require a permit, they'll tell you that. They'll also give you information about the importance of, quote, importing clean material and material that has certain structural integrity for what you're intending to do on the property.
Okay, sounds, thank you.
Okay.
And that's just an application or is that another appearance before the?
So if after tonight, you're going back to the building department, you will have a copy of this determination.
Okay.
Which will provide this information, requiring them to give your application a hard look with respect to the proposed fill in the area proximate to the improvements.
Terrific, thank you.
But I grew up there, so I do.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, with respect to appeal number 2025-022, I move that the appeal of William Boyd, 210 Sound Road, Wading River, STM number 600-30-3-27.4, Residence B80, RB80 zoning for variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 301-29A, Subsection 1C, where proposed accessory side yard abutting side street setback is 29.5 feet, minimum required is 60 feet, be granted, subject to the following. One, Landmarks Preservation Committee approval. Two, Health Department approval, if applicable. Three, Garage shall not be used for habitable space, such as living accommodations, sleeping, et cetera, shall not be improved with kitchen or bath facilities, such as installation of toilets, sinks, showers, et cetera, without approval from the building department and meeting all Town Code requirements and additional approvals as required, including compliance with Chapter 105. Four, compliance with the Town Code for importation of material via a permit, if applicable, in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments there, too, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Second.
Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mrs. Weskey.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Godzilla.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your variance has been granted and good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Well, you might need that for the building.
You might need that for the construction project.
Yeah.
Hanging in your kitchen.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Ready for the last one? So appeal number 2025-023, William Osborne, 2705 Bronoke Avenue, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Act number 600-15-1-1.1, Residence A40 zoning for a proposed one-story studio with basement and two-car detached garage. Applicant requests variances and or relief from Town Code Chapter 219-14A2, where proposed studio with basement and two-car garage are not specifically allowed development under Section 219-14 Subsection B. All development and bluff areas is prohibited unless specifically allowed by Section 219 Subsection B.
Good evening, Mr. Boyd.
Good evening.
Welcome.
For the applicant, with me tonight is Mr. Osborne, who is sitting in front row there, and Susan Har, who was the other applicant, is in London. She has a play in the King's Head Theater. She's writer, and that's one of the things we're asking for is a writer's studio. There are two accessory uses they were looking for, as Heather just indicated. One is a 545 square foot garage and the other is essentially a 575-foot writer's studio that shows up on the map as 1,159 square feet because there's a basement beneath that particular structure. And that can be more explained to you by the engineer in a short time. The site, and I assume some of you have been there, but this site is essentially a level plateau area that we're building on. It's not a slope area. It's a flat area and it's. It's not a slope area, it's a flat area, and it's been there for years and years. I think, and I assume you have a copy of the survey, but if you do not, I can put it in to evidence, but you may already have it. The owner, Mr. Osborne, has made an affidavit with me. In just a minute, I'll give you several things. To indicate to you that this level area has been there, as far as he knows, all the way back to 1964 when the code was adopted. In other words, it preexists. His house does preexist. Of course, his house is down on the beach, but that's been there for many, many years. In addition to the affidavit and the survey, which I, as I say, I believe you have, I'd like to complete the record by making sure that the comments that are required by the instruction sheet, at number four, you ask a number of questions. We've answered all those questions and I have the comments here, so I will also put that in, into evidence. Heather made up a staff report, and I assume you rely on that staff report, and that you also have that, but if you do not have that, I will also put that in evidence.
It was submitted as part of the application. I'll, I'll take it.
But if you look at page five of the staff report, you can see the level area where the cars are parked, and that basically is the area that we're talking about using for both of these structures. I would like to also leave you with a copy of the neighbors' property survey, because the neighbor's house is built so that the coastal erosion line goes right through the house. And during a period of time, and I have some of the COs and documents who issued permits, they have made improvements to the house and they've gotten the town to issue permits for them. So I think it's important part of the understanding as to what's in that area, that they also have sought improvements and had them issued COs and permits for them. What we're really here for tonight is to ask for a variance, because we realize that prohibition is in the code, but also 21920 allows us to have a variance if we can show that there's no alternative to what we're proposing, and that we can mitigate the adverse impacts, and that we can show that there won't be erosion or damage. And I think we can do that, and the engineer is here to do that. Both the engineer and architect are here. I don't know if I introduced them before, but Sean Madigan is the architect, Matthew Alward is the engineer. He's going to speak following me in just a minute. And at this point, if you have questions of me, fine, but I think you may be more interested in listening to the engineer to explain exactly what is proposed for this site.
So, I just have a few.
Okay.
So, you can't help but notice on the proposed plan that you're not only proposing a sanitary system, but also drainage, correct?
Yes.
And are you abandoning the existing sanitary system for the house? Is the house going to connect?
The house is completely separate from this.
Okay, so this sanitary system is only for the quote writer's studio?
Yes, and that's a half bath. In other words, there's no shower, there's a toilet, and there's a sink.
So, when you talked about no possible other improvement, you just recited to the town board, a, I'm assuming, another pre-existing use house with a coastal erosion line kind of bisects the house.
Yes.
And they received approval. So in this instance, why couldn't an application be made if there was quote truly lack of living space to accommodate a writing area? Why couldn't it be incorporated into the house without quote further construction or compromise of the area of the coastal erosion hazard zone?
Well, I think if you see the house, you wouldn't want to build down where they built because that house is on the beach. And that house, when there's storms, is in really serious trouble. Fortunately, a lot of it is concrete in the front and it stops the water from coming in, but when there's a storm, they have to vacate that house. So, we wouldn't want to try and build again down in that site. And I would not think the town would want us to build on the beach.
Well, I don't know. You were the one who provided the zoning board with an example of another pre-existing house.
Oh, that's way up. You have to realize where that is. That's way up high.
Correct.
So it's, it's a different situation, I think. But I have the engineer here to go over with what is going to be done at the site so you can have maybe a better idea exactly of what's being done.
So, but there have been additional improvements to the house since the 1960s and the original certificate of occupancy. You've added decks to, a 14 by 16 and a 15 by 6 by 12.
Mm-hmm. They did do that, yes. But they had another living space, which you were talking about, and they said, no, I don't think they would ever want to do that.
That's it for now.
Okay, okay.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
So help you God. Please state your name and address.
Matthew Alward with R&amp;M Engineering, 50 Elm Street in Huntington. Site civil engineer, professional engineer, New York.
Ayspailis name?
When we were contacted about the project intent here, we realized that the, the property was, was unique in the sense that trying to do any type of accessory structure in this property would be very difficult. So when we, when we took it on, we were mindful in our engineering of, of the bluff and of the stability of the bluff, and recognized the, the area that Mr. Cuddy had said, that there was this plateau. So the redevelopment was to be within the plateau. However, in order to meet the needs of the client, it extended just slightly a little bit. So we're increasing the impervious area within that plateau by 938 square feet, you know, as part of the design to accommodate this. Instead of using just typical techniques of construction with, like for example, there's an existing retaining wall that's on the south side of this parking area for the driveway that needs to be replaced. Instead of using just concrete block or poured concrete walls, conventional type retaining walls, we wanted to make sure that we maintain the bluff stability in the back and did as much as little damage to the vegetation that's there as well as the, the topography. So we're proposing a post and panel type of retaining wall construction that is typically used in a shoring of excavation that you see in the city, where we drive posts and then we slip panels in and then excavate out so that the panels slide down, so that the disturbance on the upland side of the retaining wall is minimized. So instead of having a, instead of going with a conventional construction, we're going with something a little unique in order to preserve that bluff. And the same is true for where the building is going to go, the studio. We're going to pile support the building where it slightly overhangs the bluff, so that the impact to the bluff is minimized, that there's no, there's no overexcavation within the bluff, but also so that it doesn't put any type of pressure or load surcharge onto that bluff as well. As Mr. Cuddy said, we also were installing a sanitary system for the bathrooms that are within the accessory structure. We're not going to be touching the bathrooms, the sanitary system that's with the main house. To do so would be to pump it up into this new system, which would just, we would have to trench through the bluff and then disturb more vegetation that way. The second thing that we're doing is we're providing drainage for the driveway as it comes down. If you realize you were at the property, when you went up the driveway, there was kind of a little ridge, and then you come back down. We're collecting all the rainwater that's at that ridge that now flows down into the existing parking area. We're going to collect that. We have two inches of storage for that ridge all the way down, including the new roof area, as well as the parking area that we're proposing. So we believe that the construction methods that we're, that we're proposing here will minimize the disturbance to the bluff, and when it, when it's done, there will be no negative impact to the stability of the bluff nor to the vegetation that was preserved. Additionally, any disturbed areas that we're impacting will be revegetated with saltwater tolerant native vegetation that's typical within bluff areas.
The water that you're collecting at the, at the crest?
Correct.
Where'd you say it's going?
So there's a ridge in the driveway as you come in and you go back down. So we're picking up that ridge that flows towards the accessory structure, and we're putting in pre-cast dry wells in the driveway parking area.
And how far do they go down?
About four feet, five feet.
And they just drain right into the sand?
Correct, correct. The soils that are there are very sandy soils, so there won't be a problem.
So, you made a statement that it was a minimal expansion, yet you threw out the number 958 square feet. Is it your opinion that an encroachment with an improvement of 958 square feet is minimal?
938 square feet.
Thirty-eight.
Within that plateau area.
Okay.
Yes, that's how I feel.
Which doesn't presently exist.
The plateau area is there, but the impervious surface is not.
Correct. Correct. That's virgin soil right now, virgin sand.
It's natural area.
Yeah.
You know, I would say it's been disturbed. I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it's virgin and hasn't been touched. I believe it has at some point been manipulated at some point.
Next, if you did less proposed improvements on the property, in turn, it would require less drainage. True?
That is true.
Okay. And, and I believe the proposal includes a basement?
Correct.
So, the excavation of a basement, that's pretty impactful, don't you think?
No.
Yeah.
Because the way the, the way the plateau is, it's roughly varies, we'll, we'll average it, say at around elevation 50. So we're setting the first floor at elevation 50. That expansion to the north projects out over the existing bluff by about 15 feet, and that bluff dies down. So what we're having is, is we have this, we have this projection of the first floor over the bluff. So what we're doing is, is we realize that we have this void space now. So we're filling that in, and that's the create, that's where the basement comes from.
So, basically what the site would look like is you have a pre-existing house hanging over the bluff, seeing kind of cantilevered effect, and now you're proposing other improvements with a cantilevered effect? What you're describing?
No, what I'm describing, it's, it's not existing. I think you were saying it's existing house.
Well, the house is existing.
The house is down at the base.
Yeah.
Correct.
That's out of the bluff, correct?
It's at the base of the bluff, so it's not projecting over the bluff.
Okay.
Right? So in a sense, this is projecting slightly out by 15 feet, and then like I said, there's that void space underneath this proposed structure, so utilize that space.
And the garage is proposed on a slab?
Correct.
And, why couldn't quote the garage incorporate an area for writing rather than quote a proposed structure requiring excavation, a basement, and then 938 feet projecting and encroaching more into the coastal erosion hazard area?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Are you saying to get rid of the garage?
Well, so, this second structure, one is a garage, and the second structure, which is complete with the sanitary system and drainage, has a basement, and then above elevation, to which you described a part of it is going to be like cantilevered, is 938 square feet?
No, total 938 square feet of increase in impervious surfaces. The structure itself is, I believe, what, 575? 575 for the, for the studio, 545 for the garage. They're both attached. It's one structure, just the garage is attached in an L shape.
So, question is the same, really. If the writer needed a writing space, number one, couldn't the writing space be accommodated into the existing house that exists, or accommodated within the garage structure, let's say, on the second floor? Keeping it on a slab, no basement, no excavation?
I think that writers like solitude. I, I had a personal relationship with a writer named Leon Yuris. He wrote Exodus, that's the Jewish people coming to Palestine. And I met him because he came out here looking for a place of solitude where he could write. And I think that people who write look for separate places without any interference from the home. In other words, there's no noise, there's no telephones, it's just a place where they can write. And, and that's done quite regularly. John Steinbeck had that in Sag Harbor. The same type of thing, a small cottage. And that's what they do. So it's not something you can just merge two places together. We've actually put these two buildings together, so.
But there's a house on the property.
There's a house below, and that's what I'm saying to you. The writer is looking for a place of solitude. Being in a house is not that. It's just a question of what they do. The same thing happens to an artist.
Right.
An artist looks for a place where they can have, be by themselves. That's why she's asked for this, and she's definitely a writer.
Right. You would agree not all properties can accommodate every desired improvement that somebody wants to make?
No, I think that I would agree that not everybody can have everything on their property. But here, there's an acre-plus property, the house is way away from this, several hundred feet away from this particular site. And so what they're trying to do is to have a separate place outside of the house, and that's all they're asking for. And that's done, as I say, not unusually.
All within the coastal erosion hazard zone? All disturbing property?
But the disturbance here, excuse me, is, is minimal disturbance. It's not going, it's not going to destroy the bluff, it's not going to, that's what I think the engineer has just gone through with you. That what they're doing is they're taking an area that basically is a level area and extending it a little bit, but they're not trying to do anything that's going to hurt the bluff. And that was, from the beginning, that was the whole concept.
My name's Sean Madigan, I'm the architect.
Sean Madigan?
Yeah.
We got to swear your answer.
Okay.
You solemnly swear to tell the truth, tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Sean Madigan, 42 School Street, Hampton Bay. So, there's one thing I think we, we did not discuss, is that the, the project site is an existing driveway. Are you guys all clear on that? Okay. Because we're talking about disturbance of the site, but, and how, I, I just wanted to point out that this is already an existing driveway, and we're building this, we're proposing to build this structure on the existing driveway spot. That's, that's why we located it there, because it's the only already disturbed spot on the, on the site besides the house itself.
Mr. Big Ed, Mr. Madigan, you were an architect, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I just wanted to point that out, that it's already disturbed, it's, there's an driveway there.
Well, I'm pretty good at reviewing plans.
Okay.
It's, the driveway is extended and expanded, correct?
Yeah, yes, yeah, there, yes, slightly, but it's not 900 square feet of expansion, is what I want to point out.
But then, off that, you have the proposed structures.
Yes, and, and just to also clarify, you know, let's say we, let's entertain an idea. We, we put the, this proposed structure where the driveway is completely and not, don't disturb anything else, right? We would have no way to back out of the driveway. So you'd have to back up this hill and then down. It's a very long driveway. So part of the necessity of nestling the, the garage to the side like this is to provide a little turnaround so that you can actually back the car up. That way, otherwise you're literally backing up a driveway that's hundreds of feet long every day. every day. Just wanted to point that out.
How do the cars get out from the house presently?
It's kind of this, almost the same shape that's shown. It's slightly larger, obviously, but basically, they park where the garage is now, is where they park their cars. And when they back up, they back up to the exact spot where we're proposing that they back up now. So the, the circulation of the site is essentially staying exactly the same, there's just a garage over where the cars are being parked right now.
The area where the proposed rec room and the garage are, is that vegetated right now?
So there is a portion of it that's vegetated, and if you look at, I'm not looking at the, his plans showed a little better, but, so I would say from the steps entering to the side of the proposed one-story studio, seaward, it is currently vegetated, and then from that steps, landward is the driveway, approximately.
Could I just go-
Part of the reason why we did the cantilever was to avoid further disruption of the ground, right? So we're floating over the ground and not disturbing soil, is the intention.
I just want to go back to the question earlier about why the two can't be incorporated as one. I understood what you said about you can't work inside the house, you need a quiet space. I'm not so sure I understood how that related to the, the alternative of putting the garage on the first, first level on the slab and having the writer's studio on the second. That, I'm just not so sure I understood, because I, at first I thought it was going to be height, but then I look at the number of steps there inside, going up and down that plateau, you've got, you must have great legs if you're walking there.
Well, that's kind of what I was going to say, is, you know, there's already, I don't know the number of steps, but let's just say 30 to estimate, or more, from the house to this area. And then, let's say you, you wake up, you want to go write in your writer's studio, now you have to climb another set of steps once you get inside, it's just, it gets excessive. So we were trying to keep it one story. That was the goal.
Yeah, and the, and the one-story structure is less impactful visually to the bluff from the water. So instead of having a two-story structure that's located within the bluff, visually, aesthetically, it's only a one-story structure.
Mr. Cuddy, do you have any examples of applications wherein similar relief was granted?
Excuse me, coastal erosion area?
Yes.
No, I don't. I don't know of any, but this again is unique because here, unlike talking about the coastal-
Could you speak at the mic, Mr. Cuddy? Thank you. Here, unlike talking about the coastal erosion area as a slope area, this is a level area. So that's why we put it there, and that's why we're asking the board to approve it, because it's unique. I mean, there is no slope where we're really working. So that makes to me a big difference between just saying coastal erosion as if it were sanctified area, it's a, an area that's level, that's being disturbed very little, and has been used for 50 years.
It's not even using as a parking lot right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Building, parking lot.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, they kind of-
That's going to be scary during a storm.
You know, they're having all that, disturbing the thing. Does anyone want to do that? Do you want a reserve decision? Do you want a reserve decision?
Yeah. I prefer that.
Is there anyone out there that want to speak to this variance, that you want to speak to?
I just want to ask a couple questions.
Come up to the mic, please.
She's just one.
Okay, God. I'm getting good at this swearing in, you know, swearing my wife in at supper, but listen, please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
I sure do.
Please state your name and address.
Margaret Flood, 2693 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead, New York.
So how close are you to this property?
I'm on top. I bought their property on the top.
When you go into those two driveways, you're the one on the right?
No.
She's just to the south.
I'm just to the south, thank you. Their driveway, the driveway they're talking about, my property runs completely along that driveway.
Right.
Right.
Do you have the in-ground pool?
No.
No.
So is, is your property above the road? Is that what, their road?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm south of this house.
Okay. You said you had a question?
I do have a question. Most of my questions were actually answered, but I just wanted to clarify, because one of the notices I got said it was a studio, and the other said it was a writer's studio. So they're saying writer's studio, but it's not an ADU, like, it's not going to be rented out or anything, right? It's not a studio apartment. That's not the plan, right?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Just because I feel like that changes the essence of a neighborhood if you continue to let people build, you know, accessory dwelling units, I feel like it changes the whole ambiance of a neighborhood, so I just wanted to clarify that. And it did say two different things.
So Heather, this is RA 40?
Yes.
Under the accessory apartment code?
An accessory apartment would be permitted on any property in this-
Correct, so over time, yes, they could convert it.
Okay, that's fine. The other question that I had, and this is, doesn't really have to do with this, I don't think, but I think this property is zoned for seasonal use. Does this affect that? When I looked at the zoning map today, it said it was zoned for seasonal use, and I think that the original house was, but I'm wondering if this affects that zoning.
Right, so the zoning itself is Residence A 40, so it allows residences. How it's classified, you know, whether it's a 210, which is single-family, or I think a seasonal is a 260, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Correct.
That has to do with the improvements of the house and whether it's used year-round or not, so it's not really so much a land use question because residences are permitted. It's still a single-family residence, whether it's year-round or seasonal is like a property code.
Kind of a moot point. Okay, I wasn't sure. It's not my thing, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy, just two questions related to this residence comments. The existing single-family home, is that a seasonal residence or is it occupied year-round?
Occupied year-round.
Okay. And the proposed writer's studio, is that proposed as seasonal or year-round?
No, pretty much year-round, yes.
We got to know, when's the, the next meeting? Is everybody here? You're not going to be here the next meeting. So it'd have to be in a following, that would be the first meeting in a while.
Yeah. What's the date for August, Heather?
August, the only meeting in August is the 28th.
August 28th.
Okay. I won't be here for that. So you're here, right?
Yeah.
So if the board, what do you think about doing a reserve decision for August 20th? We can talk about it. You know, if we want any more questions, we can call them, right?
Yep.
Reserve decision.
Would you be, I shouldn't say do you agree, but I recommend that we go to August 20th with a reserve decision.
August 20th?
28th.
28th.
28th, I'm sorry, thank you.
Vote, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recruit, cruise myself on this case.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to move with a gentle 828 reserve decision.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Prochetta.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes. Oh, you know, recuse, forget it. Mr. Villa.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So we're going to reserve decision August 28th.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Cuddy, I'm no John Steinbach, but I own my novel, The Living Room.
You didn't, excuse me, I didn't hear all of it. You said you're no John Steinbach.
I says I'm no John Steinbach.
You wrote a book.
Do you want me to do one last call for the first appeal of the night?
Please.
Okay. Is there anyone here for appeal number 2025-02047 Highview Drive? This was adjourned from June 12th of 2025.
Are you here, sir, for that?
No, sir.
Oh, okay.
What are you here for, anyway?
My name is George Fongus, I'm here reporting variance for detached garage.
You're one already, goodbye.
It was granted.
Thank you, August, I missed the party. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So what should we do? Should we move this to the next meeting or August 28th?
Which one?
Or, or do, no, no, I'm talking about 47 Highview, or does the board want to make a decision?
On which one?
47 Highview Drive, the appeal, that was adjourned from June 12th.
You should just put it over to the 28th, see if anybody shows up.
The shed in the front yard?
Yeah, we got to make a decision. Just do it.
Do this.
They may make a move it.
Wait a minute. Can we make a decision, guys, on this?
Yeah. I thought we did. I've got it here.
Heather, can you confirm there was no request for an adjournment?
No, I didn't, so at the last meeting, which was June 12th of 2025, the expediter, we adjourned, we adjourned it to this date, which is July 10th. They agreed. I haven't heard from them since.
Mark it off.
Let's read it.
Mark it off.
Let's read it.
So we're good?
Yep.
Make a motion, we mark it off.
Mark it off what?
He's going to read it.
We do it. We make, we act upon it. That's what, that's the motion is?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, so with Mr. Chairman, appeal number 2025-020, I move that the appeal of Jeffrey M.B. Salins at 47 Highview Drive, Wading River, Suffolk County, tax map number 600-49-3-17, Residence B80 zoning, prevariances and/or relief from Town Code Chapter 301, 29A, 1A, where existing shed is located in front yard, not be granted, and instead, the shed be relocated out of the front yard in compliance with Town Code.
Second, please.
Second.
All right, Mr. Portia.
Aye.
Mr. Zaweski.
Aye.
Mr. Barnes.
Nay.
Mr. Gazello.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, what do we have? Meetings, notes?
We have minutes from June 12th of 2025.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So the next meeting date is July 24th, 2025.
So moved.
All in favor?
Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Good.